For the pleasure allegiance to our flag, we stand and join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, that's giving more pertinent by the day. All right, Lori, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Bryan?
Here.
Councilmember Rainville?
President.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Yep.
Mayor Pealan?
Here.
And also Commander Heath and Ms. Stockman?
Here.
All right. Move to approve the agenda. I would like to add one item to the agenda. You know, I want to keep things moving along here. I would like to add somewhere down here. Counsel, we can put it after eight here. I want to talk about the city sign out here.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would like to, under the consent agenda, item C, move that down to what would be council items. So it'd be the second council item. And I have a question on the certifying of the results of the local election. If I could just ask Ms. Strike a question on that and not have to move it. That would be appropriate.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
As I understand it, and Planner Stockman can correct me if I'm wrong, but item 6A is not, there's nothing to approve tonight?
Correct. That was continued on the planning and zoning until next month.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
There are no other additions or amendments to the agenda? Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended?
A second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I just want to clarify on the removal of interim use permit. When you said move to next month, you mean the November meeting?
No, 6A.
It was continued to the P and Z meeting.
No, 6A, not 5A. Item 6A.
6A was continued, and I thought I just heard to next month's P and Z. But that would be December.
P and Z on November 24th.
Okay, so not next month, it's this month's P and Z. Okay, I just want to be sure, okay? All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing here none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to the consent agenda, and Councilmember Rainville, your question to Coach Trager.
Ms. Strike, for item I, the certifying of the results, I looked at the Secretary of State's website today. Their numbers are different. It's just by one on a couple of them. But I just want to make sure that what we are going to certify is correct. And I don't know if you're using the Secretary of State's numbers?
Mayor, Counsel, yes, I took this off the Secretary of State's website. And I took it out, must have been last week when this came out, yes.
Okay, I checked today, checked yesterday and today. And there are a couple different changes. A couple, there's like one on a couple of them. So it doesn't make any different, it doesn't, the outcome is the same as far as who prevailed and who didn't. But I will, would just ask that you check the Secretary of State's website so that whatever our legal document is, is correct.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, we've moved item C, everything else some councils have a chance to look at on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with the correction to item 2I.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing here none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have any floor items? All right, keep moving. Commander Heath?
Again, round two. I'll keep my report brief this month. The calls for service were sent out and distributed, and there were 169 calls for service in October. I did want to let the council know, I certainly appreciate, during the month, I met with city staff to talk about the issues ongoing at Bar None. Ms. Strike and Ms. Stockman were very good to work with in trying to understand the issues that we're seeing. And I just wanted to relay that to the council, that it was very good to work with them. And they were both very eager to learn about what we're seeing as a sheriff's office when we're responding there. And I think that might really help when we try to make a plan for whatever the next steps are with Bar None. And I just think it's becoming more and more important that that issue get addressed. Again, the three calls that I would highlight this month all have to do with Bar None. And it's, but I'll keep them brief. But just to put it in perspective, one of the days I highlighted for Ms. Stockman and Ms. Strike were, within two hours on one day, we were called to Bar None on two different overdose attempts. One of the residents was trying to overdose on Benadryl, and another one is trying to consume a caustic substance to harm themselves. I have a lot of concerns about that, just for the safety of the residents there. And the most concerning thing to me was when I was reading the deputy's report that was there. He made a comment in the last line of his report that said, while he was there attending to this incident, the last one, the last overdose, there were multiple residents yelling, swearing, and punching the walls. And his last comment was the most telling. The deputy noted that the staff had little or no control over the residents that were there. And my, one of the statements I made to Ms. Strike and Ms. Stockman is that my concern is it's going to keep getting progressively worse, and we're going to have some type of incident there where somebody truly gets harmed, like we did this summer with that assault where the boy had to be airlifted out of there. I'm very glad that the city's taking proactive measures to look at this and do something. And it's very obvious in speaking with the city staff that the administration at Volunteers of America does not have a real, true understanding of what's happening at that campus. And the other piece of the puzzle is, I was actually, I was shocked to hear the words, but I was not surprised when I heard them. We were talking, and apparently there's no mistake that they're, whatever the worst people that they have that they need to deal with, they're sending them here. So this isn't just, they understand what's going on. They have a lot of people that are causing issues in other programs and things like that. And it sounds like this is the place where they're sending them. So I'm, again, very happy that the city's taking the steps that they are. And I think we just need, as a group, continue to pursue this. I spoke this week with Sheriff Stewart. He's more than willing to become part of the solution if we need to meet with the folks from Volunteers of America to truly help them understand this. He's more than willing to make the time to help make those efforts. So I apologize.
My understanding, they were also starting to open up a homeless shelter there?
Yeah, there's a, and Ms. Stockman has a lot of information about the different programs and things like that, but yes. And it's to the point, one of the issues this week is, two people ran from the facility, found a vehicle in St. Francis that had keys in it. They crashed it through a gate and drove it back to the facility and were doing donuts in the yard with it of the facility when the deputies got there. So we had residents break out, steal a vehicle, crash it through a gate, drive it back to the facility. The facility calls 911, the deputies show up, and here's a stolen vehicle doing donuts on the property and driving recklessly. So we're just at a point where it's pretty difficult to say that things are under control there. And I understand the plight, I don't know, I don't have answers as to how they can fix it, but I just know it's broken. You know, I certainly couldn't stand here and tell you what needs to be done to fix it, but something needs to be done before something really tragic happens. That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
On that topic, I would truly appreciate. I did see that on Liz's bill in October that she met with the sheriff's office, Lori, Ms. Strike, and staff at the head VOA. It would be very nice to have some proactive information provided to the council as to what those conversations were, what the thoughts are, what their thoughts are. It's an important issue. We've had conversations many, many times. And not only on this topic, but many times we've asked for proactive communication as to what Liz is involved in. And I just would like to see some information as to what the conversations were, what are you agreeing to, and we can talk more about that later, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stockman?
Just briefly, I'm putting together a whole comprehensive background as I was directed, so I'm not, you know, intentionally keeping anything from you. I'm trying to, I'm meeting with all the different, you know, pieces of the puzzle here, gathering information, going to put that together. I have another meeting with Attorney Rupee next week. And then VOA has been provided the application forms they need. They have been in consultation with their attorneys. They are getting ready to fill those out so we can begin moving forward and setting up a meeting with the city, sheriff's office, the school, Volunteers of America, you know, as the property owner, and also Department of Human Services. You've got Department of Education. There are so many people involved. So that is forthcoming very soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Liz, we appreciate you spearheading this up and taking the initiative and getting all the information that you need, meeting with the people that you need. We've all been kind of sitting back and listening to Commander Heath, and I think the progress that you're making is great because we need to get some traction, so I appreciate what you've been doing.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like some clarification, and partly because I've been involved with this for 12 years. I've been to, I've heard their spiel, I've heard the Volunteers of America, I've heard each director they bring in, programs change. My understanding is, is your conversation with the attorney was working on getting the school approved and the greenhouse approved. Because that's the only discussion we've had up to this point was getting the greenhouse in. And we realized that they moved the school down from St. Francis without anybody in the school district notifying anybody. And now then, that we're moving a school into the facility. And the conversation we had had with the attorney was, if they need to have a use permit to have the school, this would be the opportunity for the city to put conditions on that they have ignored in the past. And when they're expanding their facilities to a homeless shelter, when they've gone back to mixed genders, when they are sending the problem clients up here, those are huge. And I guess, not knowing what's going on, having met with the county, met with the sheriff's department, met with the police department in St. Francis, I think I would have a lot to add from a background standpoint to that. And if the council agrees with that, I think it, I would like to be included on future discussions before certainly we're making an agreement. And if you're saying they're filling out applications, I'm presuming that has to do with the school and the greenhouse. Is that accurate?
Correct, yeah, that's exactly what you stated, is our means of trying to get some sort of conditions established here, yes.
And I think because of my 12 years of dealing with that, it would be germane to participate upfront because we've made, we've had a lot of promises, and they've all been broken. And if we get to the point where you break out, you steal a car, and you come back to the facility, it's to the point of brazen. And the residents, our residents that live around there, that's been their big concern. We were promised anytime that there was an escapee or a runner, that there was a phone tree, because the residents wanted to know. They have possessions, and obviously, somebody lost a car. There was a commitment to have a phone tree. What happens is these things just kind of disappear. And if you don't have the history with it, you don't know that. Nobody's holding them accountable. And so part of that is, I think it's important to have continuity in history upfront before we go and even propose an application that isn't extremely strict and have teeth in it. Because we just go back to letting them have a school there. And again, part of our problem has been, nobody has been able to identify under what permit they first started operating. We have building permits, when they expanded, we have different things. And so one of the things that the attorney had said is, go back to the oldest known activity and say, okay, that was apparently what you did at one time. And subsequent to that, they've changed Department of Corrections, Department of Health, back to, you know, they did both, and they're back to one, now they're back to the other. They went male, female, they were all male, now they're mixed again. They were changing age groups. And if we don't keep that in the conversation, they just seem to morph into whatever they want to do next, and we don't have any control over it. And it's costing us a bundle, and I share Commander's concern that it's getting wilder, and it's going to be physically threatening, if not life threatening. And the clients and staff always are concerned, but we also have residents concerned, so.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to add, and you brought that up. In this month, we had a case where during the daytime, one resident assaulted two different staff members. Our deputy was called there later in the day, and that same individual resident punched our deputy. We're talking about a uniformed licensed peace officer. But these staff members, or these residents are so brazen and are so willing to do whatever, punched our deputy. And that goes on the heels of some of the other things we've talked about throughout the year, where they're challenging our deputies and trying to elicit physical confrontations with them. The thing, one of the things I brought up to the staff is, understand in 2020, we're being told as a profession that society doesn't want us using criminal justice and law enforcement tactics to deal with mentally ill people and people with, these aren't always criminals. We're going there to deal with behavior problems and things like that. Each time we go there and have to deal with something that is not criminal, and we're dealing with a mental health issue, it puts our staff in jeopardy of having to use force in a situation where they don't necessarily have to. So it's becoming more and more risky for everybody involved. And the other piece of the puzzle that I brought up to staff was one of the things that people need to realize. When we send a deputy up there, and if we send a child that's having a mental health issue to a hospital, we're now responsible for the medical bills that are incurred by that child. And now, Anoka County and the citizens of Now Then are paying for that child to be housed at a hospital, being treated for their mental health issue. And Volunteers of America is still collecting the dollars from whatever entity placed that child there at the facility. But now the child's not there, and Anoka County and Now Then residents are footing the bill for having to pay for that child being in a care facility. So it's a.
And that's exactly why, because this is what we've been experiencing. We want to make sure, I, you know, I for one want to make sure the council is properly represented in these discussions. We have had numerous talks with Volunteers of America on their own security force. And we couldn't force it on them. And our one tool was the application for a school. If you want a permit to do anything that isn't automatically allowed or grand, you know, can't say grandfather anymore, but isn't historically there, because nobody can find the permit. But if it isn't going back to historic evidence of what was going on, it needs to be permitted. And if it needs to be permitted, there need to be conditions. And one of the things that they've refused is to bring in their own security force that would then say, we will transport to hospital, we will take the cost, because we're taking the revenue off this situation. And to have the city and the county paying for the expense while they're continuing to collect the revenue is just unacceptable. And they keep giving us a moving target. And at some point, they need to understand it. I'll go back to the history of when we were Department of Corrections and Department of Health, and Department of Health came in and shut them down. So they dropped Department of Health clients and went Department of Corrections only. Now my understanding is, we don't have Department of Corrections, we only have Department of Health. And somehow, Department of Health has said, well, we'll overlook what we did before and license them again. And somebody has to hold their feet to the fire that's been through this. And it can't be just, you know, the application for expanding facilities because St. Francis School District said, you should move that back down there, your own facility instead of St. Francis. I mean, it's just unacceptable there to say, we're moving a school into your district and not even notify Now Then. So I don't want to say it's a, there needs to be some intensity and focus on this, that it will change. Because our residents have been hearing this forever, and they don't believe us anymore. And like I say, because Volunteers of America can't keep it, you know, the agreements right, in place. When somebody runs, the calling tree's supposed to be activated. And obviously, that's not even happening anymore, because I'm sure the people there don't even know about it. But our residents remind us about it, so we need to be partner with this. So I will leave that to the council, how you want to handle that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I believe we have already provided you the ability to work with staff, the sheriff's office, and VOA numerous times. So I'm surprised you weren't involved in these conversations because council has given you the authority to do that numerous times. I appreciate the work being done on it. I know that we have numerous times given you approval to participate in those conversations.
So would be the council's directive to continue? If staff does continue to meet, to allow me to participate or to have me participate?
I would be in favor of that again, yes.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Is there any other council members that would want to at least be involved as from a backup perspective, if you're not available for something or other?
I would be. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stockman?
Yeah, please know, I was directed to collect the background information. There's absolutely no, you know, decisions, applications, anything being done without you or the decision-making body. So I'm attempting, as I said, to put this all together in a packet of information so that the rest of the group can learn from some of that background going way back to the 70s. And I can provide the actual documentation that we, you know, have dug out. And, you know, yeah, you're right, it's gone back and forth lots of times.
And I just, and I appreciate that as well. You know, we were directed to get background information. We've been trying to find out where the permits come from. I mean, we've called St. Francis, we've called Oak Grove, we've gone back to Oak Grove Township days to see what they can find in their records. I just think, if you're collecting information, it would be helpful to have somebody who's been doing it for 12 years help you gather that information. So when you do present it to council, I'm not bringing up, what about this, this, or this, that maybe didn't come up in your research that I was firsthand partying to. So I just think it'd be helpful. And Councilmember Blake?
I think that you have been quite overloaded with a lot of things, with the fire department, with COVID and the care. And so I can see where this, these girls working on this has been a gift to you, not an over, maybe an oversight that you want to be involved. But I think it was a gift to you that you weren't asked to be on everything. And she isn't really making any decisions. All she's doing is trying to get the background. So the rest of it is that are newer to this, will start to understand the whole picture. And so I just don't see this as something where someone has been deliberately left out of this. I think it's a gift.
No, I don't say deliberately. I say it's a missed opportunity, because I can add.
I know, but I think you've been really, really overtaxed with a lot of things for a while. It's slowing down now. Think of all, you've been, you've been talking about it. You've been in meetings almost every night of the week, getting all these things together and this, and this big project with our, with internet. I mean, you've been doing a ton. That's taken a lot of your time and energy. So these girls have been a big help to get this going and give you a little break for a few days.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stockman?
Please to understand, I mean, directed to the group here, that, you know, the conditional use permit is really for the school, allowing a school in the residential area. And, you know, I need direction too from Attorney Rupee, how he wants to pursue this and present this to VOA, because they really, to this point, have, you know, not a lot of knowledge of our big concerns. And I purposefully kept those quiet for right now. But, you know, what's the best approach? And yes, we will definitely involve you.
Thank you.
Commander Heath, anything else?
No, sir.
Sorry, you were going to keep it short, and I dragged it out on you.
No worries at all.
Anything for the commander? Commander did send out a note today on a specific incident that the sheriff has addressed, that we don't think we will have a problem with now, but who knows what's going forward, so. Did all council get that?
I did not forward that yet.
Okay. It'll be something that it has to do with picketing individual properties. So as Lori looks at that and sees it appropriate, she'll forward that to the rest of the council. Commander doesn't think it applies here, but the sheriff's being proactive. We have it in our pocket if we need it. Thankfully, at this point, things have been quiet. We do, again, wish to acknowledge, we appreciate our law enforcement. Had some conversation with deputies on duty here in town recently. And we appreciate what's keeping us safe and responding as you have been, so. So thank you very much, and again, our thanks to the staff.
You're welcome. I'll pass along the thank you.
All right.
I'm going to excuse myself. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
And you too.
Thank you, you as well.
In the meadow, you can make a snowman.
All right, we have a public hearing. So I will open a public hearing. This is Resolution 2020-62, evoking a 2006 conditional use permit issued for a conditional use permit for a commercial dog kennel on the property owned by Barry and Vicki Wagner, located at 6560 Norris Lake Road, PID 10-33-25-11-0002. Is there anyone, and I have seen the notices that went out. So the public notices were mailed out. I see nobody in the audience to speak to it except for the property owner. Did you wish to say anything?
Not necessarily.
It's pretty straightforward. So we have a reg. So we have a request to revoke the conditional use permit. Uh, no one here to speak to it. Council, anybody that has a question or concern?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Basically, he's revoking the CUP so that he can, um, so that's no longer a condition on the property, as I understand it. Is that basically the gist of it?
I understand correctly.
Sounds pretty cut and dry.
All right. And I will close the public hearing and ask for a vote of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that we approve the resolution revoking the 2006 conditional use permit issued for conditional use permit for a commercial dog kennel at the property owned by Barry and Vicki Wagner, located at 6560 Norris Lake Road, PID 10-33-25-11-002.
Motion second. Any discussion? Thinking hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. You are revoked.
Glad to see you leave.
If I could pass on one thing while I was here.
No, no, let's keep the disco.
Um, it's been a very rewarding 13 years to be on the planning and zoning. Uh, but my, remember me, won't be my last one. Vicki and I have loved our years here, and I'll end it this, truly, it feels like country. We've got to deal with these around, which we can take it with us, but we're kind of just getting older, we're, we're building a nice rambler, and it's a half mouth for some of our grandkids, so we're, we're like blessed wherever we want, so.
Well, we, we have been very fortunate to have you in planning and zoning. Your knowledge, your background, your experience, your demeanor has all been wonderful. Working alongside you on PMZ, and then certainly working as liaison, it was a pleasure to have you on, and you were a real benefit to the city in serving that role, and thank you for your faithfulness for 13 years.
It was very rewarding and inspiring, so.
Where are you moving?
Out to Victor Township.
Okay. Not too far.
Not, not too far.
No.
But, uh, getting on a two-story and, and not having the, the kennel business anymore. We're still in our own business, but, uh, we, we closed at the start of COVID, and we've been really kind of looking for a place to go for the last two years, wanting to, well, just downsize and get out of the two-story.
Sure.
As we, we go.
It helps to be in by the grandkids as well.
Yeah.
Yep, that's a big blessing, finding something so close to you, so.
Yeah.
Because we're taking a 20 acre parcel out there to go.
Wonderful.
Well, our best to you, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still need to see you every day, though.
Yeah.
All right, planning and zoning. A is gone, continued. I, I will say, anybody who hasn't seen the, the video, you know, I was looking back, and the point of a public hearing is to bring information to the council. So when we schedule public hearings through the PMZ, I, I would encourage council, when you can be there in person, it, it's very helpful. Certainly, in this day and age, that's not always possible or practical, but I do encourage you to make sure you're watching it online. This one ended up being a bit of a buzzsaw. I'm not sure anybody saw this coming, including staff who live on the street. I was very surprised by the comments and the resistance. I don't know what the applicant has given any indication, how they've responded to it, but, um, public hearing is important. The residents brought up a lot of things, so the planning and zoning table, or continued the meeting, the public hearing, to get additional information on some of the concerns the residents had. So I would suggest, if you haven't seen the video on it, watch the video, and then on the 24th, it will be continued, you may want to be, if you can make that meeting attended, otherwise make sure you're watching online before it comes to us. Because the point of a public hearing is to have the PMZ discuss it, but it's so we have the background, so we can make decisions as well.
They're talking of planning and zoning A, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the car dealership out on 47.
Right. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I did listen to it, and I appreciate that staff got that on the website so quickly, because it was a Thursday night, we're closed on Friday, but they got it on there yesterday, by, by yesterday, so that was nice, so thank you. I was really surprised too, because I thought, where have they all been for the other public hearings? You know, this is, that was a continuation of. There's been discussion on that, on that topic for a while, and all of a sudden, it just.
Well, the one was a concept plan.
Correct, yeah.
And, and.
Maybe that's, okay.
And the residents wouldn't have been notified of that, because it wasn't publicly noted. Thirty, thirty residents were, were notified for the public hearing, and, and their concern was it wasn't enough. And I said, well, I, I, I believe the thirty that were notified were even beyond the 1,320 feet. Um, but, you know, they went out and talked to neighbors who were concerned, and, but they don't live on the street, and I'm, I'm not sure who beyond the thirty I would have notified. You know, I, I thought it was aggressive, the way we did it, to go all the way back to West Lord Brook, and all the way up to Old Viking. If people didn't come, and we didn't tell them, if, if they couldn't come for a variety of reasons, they can send letters. If it's age or other inconvenience, they can send letters. But nobody should say, we didn't get a chance to have our, our say. And, um, I think we need to do a better job educating people to the public hearing process, because I, I don't know that people understood what we were at. Couple of them thought this was the council that they were in front of, couple of them were targeting the mayor, and then said he realized he was sitting right there, and it was a chance to be heard, and it wasn't jamming anything down anybody's throat, but the tone got out of hand on us. I think we need to, to step back and maybe take it a little slower, and say, here is the process, here's what your role is in it right now, here's what the commission's role in it, and it still has what it counts. And so I think we need to do a better job explaining that in the future, but it's been a long time since we've had, um, a meeting like that. So it was a lesson, and it's worthwhile watching before it comes to council.
So is that a couple of steps above the Cars Tree Service?
Way above. These people were lit up.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, Cars Tree Service, they had their opinions. These people were determined something was being foisted on them, and they didn't have a voice in it, and they were just kind of, they were frustrated, because they thought something was happening, and they couldn't do anything about it.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rainville.
The other thing too is, things that were, and so going back to your explaining things better to the, to the people in the audience, there were many comments about what used to happen there. And we're not dealing with what used to happen there, we're looking at what is being requested to happen going forward. So you can't hold, if Johnson's owned the house before the Smiths, and the Johnsons had trouble, you can't hold the Smiths, you can't hold that against the Smiths. So I, I think what if, and every time it's different, but, you know, you have to, that people have to understand that what used to happen there is not what necessarily is going to happen there. It, it's a different type of a situation, it's different owners, maybe they're gonna do the same thing, but it's a different ownership, and you would hope that those things wouldn't happen. But that new owner can't be held responsible for what the previous owners were doing.
Yeah, I, I will say that the tone I got from the residents was, they were operating under an IUP, was a single owner, and now you're gonna come in with two dozen owners under an IUP. Why do we think that because you didn't look at the violations under the other IUP and do anything about it, it's gonna be any better here? And now you have 25 people to try and corral instead of two? And that was their point, is IUP doesn't do anything if you don't enforce it.
Right.
So yes, there were problems there before, they could surface again, because you have the same type of activity, only more. What are you gonna do if it's, if the conditions aren't met? And that's a, an appropriate question. If, if we say you need the conditions, you lose your IUP, we have, as a council, have to back that up. Or correct the conditions when it come to our attention, saying, this is the condition that's supposed to be met, it wasn't. Clean it up before you lose your IUP.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Stockton.
Well, a couple of things, um, yeah, we long talked about needing a process for how we go about that and treat everybody with an IUP or CUP, as cars enforcement goes. So we could move forward on that potentially in 2021. But interestingly enough, I don't remember one written complaint about that property in the last four years. Um, and I was out there five, six times at least, you know, counting cars and telling them they had to get rid of the inoperable vehicles and things like that, that I knew were in violation. But then, yeah, all of a sudden, out of the blue, we got a room full, so.
I, I think we were all surprised with that, and, and you're right. If, if there had been a series of complaints, we'd have been anticipating something. But all the things that came up, some of them probably legitimate, some of them are opportunistic. It was like, you know, if, if this hasn't been a problem, why did it suddenly become one? And I guess because there was a change in use, they, somebody decided it was a good opportunity to, to clean up X number of years of issues.
Right, and one final comment, um, I did speak to the applicant, and he's willing to move forward, at least at this point, and try to figure this out. And, you know, pay for some of the time it's going to take to meet with a city engineer. And I tried to, tried to explain at the meeting how there's multiple things going on here, not just what they thought was pollution from the property, but you've got the adjoining road, you've got water coming under 47 across from the east, you've got people that could have culverts on their private properties that are sized wrong, causing flooding issues, and, um, you know, on and on and on, and you got other people on that cul-de-sac that have inoperable vehicles, other forms of pollution that, you know, so, anyway, it's a, it was interesting, so.
It was an eye-opener. All right, we've got the next one, ordinance 2020-04, on-street parking and snow removal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2020-04. And I understand it, that the planning and zoning, there, there wasn't any, there wasn't any changes necessary, or that came from the, the zoning commission.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
That's second for discussion.
Motion is second, discussion?
Um, I guess what, going back to our conversations back, I think it was February when we were discussing this, um, so it's, I thought we were looking for something that was, uh, bullet point, you know, just more easily read, easily understood, um, don't plow across the road. This is all, you know, legal, legalese, and I get that, but I think people get lost in that, and I think what we need to be able to say is, you can't do this. It doesn't make any difference that there's a state statute against it, you just can't do this. And, and I would have thought, since we originally had conversations back in February, that we would have had this in front of us a while back, so that we would have had more opportunity to look at it, um, and to see if it fit our needs. Where now, we're, we've already had snow in October, and now we're gonna get snow again tonight, so, um, I said.
I, I think the letter doesn't, doesn't address, and I mentioned this the other night, Liz, doesn't address what we said as a council back in February. We want a plain English letter. Going, going back to the statute, the statute, it does, I agree with Councilwoman Rainville, we get lost in the legalese. There really is nothing clear about you can't push snow across the road.
Yeah.
It, it says you can't leave it in the ditch, you can't leave it on the, on the right-of-way. But if people don't understand that, if they're pushing it up into a field, that it's, you just can't push it across the road. And that's still not clear either in the letter or in our ordinance. So I do think that, that it needs to be, um, put in, in common English, that when you go to somebody and say, see, that would be across the road, and they're, they're gonna come back and argue, I, I didn't leave anything in the road, I didn't leave it in the right-of-way or the ditch, I pushed it way up into my neighbor's field, and he's okay with it. And, and this doesn't make that clear. And, and yes, I, I agree, we started this last February, it would have been nice before the snow season to have it finalized, but I, I, I do think, in particular, the letter, and if any ordinance does need to state, it's a city ordinance, consistent with state statute, if you want to mewze yourself with the legalese, you're free, here it is. But in our case, um, you need to know that right-of-way means this, ditch means this, and pushing it across the road violates anything. Because that's the big thing. And then the, the next question would be how to enforce it, because there are a lot of people in town that push across the road. And, and if we're going to enforce it like we did last year, where it's only if it's in the shoulder, um, you know, and I had a good conversation with Eric on that, if it's in the shoulder and it freezes, in the middle of the night, you hit that ice block, it, if it doesn't damage the truck, it certainly jars the operator. So, you know, people need to understand that. But the problem is, we're saying you can't push it across the road. And that's gonna be a big thing, because I will bet you, I could find dozens of, of situations after a snowfall where people pushed across the road. I see them pushing it across county roads. And, and so that, I, I believe, needs to be cleaned up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
But also, if I, my memory serves me, we had talked about what's our procedure going to be, as far as, um, how we're going to enforce it, who's gonna be responsible for enforcing, how are we gonna work with the, with the Milka County Sheriff's Office? And unless I'm missing it, I, I don't see any of that in here.
We talked about an educational opportunity, because, um, if everybody that's been pushing across the road for a period of time, and some of them will tell you they've been doing it for years, suddenly find out they're on a, even this educational letter, it does, the last paragraph goes into, you respond to us by this time, or you're gonna get the next level. I, I think that we need to have that identifier saying, here's clearly stated, you can't push across the road, and that's across the road. This first year, it's going to be a lot of giving out flyers of what you can't do. And Lori, you, you'll need to be prepared to, so I'll call you and say, they've been doing it forever, longer than you've been alive, and, and Doug, I don't know when did this change? And so, but I think the educational component really needs to be stressed this year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mayor Stockton.
Um, a couple of things, and now, I'm trying to, to be consistent with our established code enforcement procedures, okay? So this, this letter was based on the friendly letter that we added a couple of years back, that was approved by you. So it is critical that we reference those specific sections. If you want me to break out some points underneath each section, and like you say, put it in English or whatever.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't object, I mean, because people are gonna say, why are you doing this? Because it's a state statute. But in state statute, it's just not clear that you can't push it across the road. It says you can't leave it in the right-of-way. Well, most people don't know how far the right-of-way extends anyway.
Right.
So when they push it across, well, say, in my house, they push it across the road into my yard, well, they leave it in the right-of-way, because my trees are back beyond the right-of-way, and they don't come as far as my trees.
Right.
So they don't realize they're leaving it in the right-of-way. So you could come back and say, you left it in the right-of-way. But let's say they do it in my field portion, and they push it way back beyond the right-of-way, it still came across the road. And this, by state, state statute means that. And this, by state statute, means that, but it doesn't say it. And our ordinance doesn't say, you can't push it across the road, even if it's your property that you're pushing onto, you can't push it across the road. And, and yes, you have to have the statute in there, otherwise, why are we saying this?
Right, right.
They're going to come back and say, and we never did this report until we got Lori, now she's enforcing this, what's going on? Well, no, it's always been statute, but it's never been clear that means not across the road. Push it into your front yard, give it back from your right-of-way.
Well, they can push it there temporarily, if they're going to push it back into their, you know, I know that people have really long driveways, and it's easier to go straight out, but if they can get out in the road and then push it back onto their own property.
Which is, which is typically, you know, like the people with long driveways, like me, that's what they'll do, they'll push it down to the end, and then they'll go back and, and come in once they've cleared the driveway. But the other, the other side of that is, the people that don't push it back, they just keep going across the road and leave it on the neighboring property.
Right, okay.
And that's the couple we had problems with, with last year.
Right. So, I guess, earlier in the year, I talked to Commander Heath, and he, yeah, he agreed, we definitely need to educate people, so we're not upsetting everybody with a notice or a citation. You know, they need several warnings. I don't know if you want to attempt to, I mean, I've left a spot here where I'm asking people to call, so we know they got the letter, and that they understand the letter. You will get people that choose to just throw it away, ignore it, or whatever you want to call it. And, you know, under those scenarios, if we see the snow across the road again, they're going to get the official notice, and we're going to go to the next step. But, yeah, I can outline those things. I am making the assumption, we are following our established procedures, so that, you know, this notice, this letter, rather, I call this a letter, and then the notice is an official notice, and then the third step is a citation, that this gets mailed to each property, just like anybody else would with any other type of violation. If you want something different than that, you'll have to let me know. I know we did have a conversation about hand-delivering and those kinds of things, but I don't know that that's reasonable or even attainable. Do you recall that?
I do. And I think that, the scope of it needs to be understood, because the people that were tagged last year were selected because they left things in a right-of-way, and it affected plowing. But it was, you know, according to Eric and Joe, they certainly didn't identify everybody who pushed things over. If they pushed it down into the ditch, they let it go. And it didn't seem to bother their plowing to let it go, so they're very selective on which ones were pending. And I think if we were consistent and say, everybody gets a notice, or everybody gets an educational piece if they pushed across the road, I will bet you that it will be in the, in the dozens, if not.
Oh, yeah.
Many dozens.
I'm sure.
And that will cause a stink, because people that have been doing it for a long time are going to wonder what happened. And it's just, if we're going to enforce it, I don't think we can be selective about it either.
Oh, no.
And that, therefore, because we haven't, I'm going to guess this year, it's going to be mostly educational. Now, people say, yeah, I got your message and I don't care, I'm going to keep doing it, then obviously, we've got a process.
Right.
But I think we really need to be focused on education, and staff will need to be prepared, because there's going to be a lot of calls. What is this? They're going to claim to never hurt it, and I will say that none of our documents say, don't push it across the road, it says, don't leave it in the right-of-way. And heck, if we were going to do that, probably every driveway right now, leave something in the right-of-way when they plow the end of the pavement. Or anybody who pushes back out of the right-of-way completely, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
I'd also like to say something, and I, and I understand that ordinances are for residential and commercial, but I think that needs to be specified also. I see a lot of our businesses pushing it across, whether it be onto their own property or somebody else's property, or onto city property. So, I just think it needs to be clear that this is, this relates to everyone that has property, not just residential.
Certainly.
And, and I'd also like to, I know we talked about website, and I looked at the website today, and all it does is link you to the, to the ordinance, and that's not clear, it links you to the state statute, that's not clear to people when they read that. And that needs to be more of an educational piece also, on the website. And if we're taking advantage of redoing our website, let's do it right.
Mr. Mayor.
Lander Stockman.
Maybe it would be helpful, too, to have some sort of small diagram, because I'm willing to bet about 50% of the people don't even know where their property line is versus, you know, edge of right-of-way versus edge of paved road. So, that kind of information sometimes helps, too. I mean, even though a lot of people out here may own to the center of the road, they don't have rights to it necessarily, so, trying to explain where their property line is in relation to the.
I think that's beneficial.
Okay.
Pictures, pictures go a long way.
Okay.
Whether it's a sketch or a photo with annotations on it, I think people would understand. And in that, then you can say, this also means, you don't push anything across the road, because they'll say, I went back and cleaned up the mounds, I didn't leave anything in the, in the right-of-way. And you'd understand, it just, you don't do it.
Okay.
If it goes out into the road, you push it back up into your yard, and everybody's happy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
By reading the ordinance as it is there, I can see, you know, it's in there, but I can see where it's not exact, don't plow snow over, don't push snow over the road. What I'm wondering is if we break out Section 513, because it seems like A is more pertinent to, this is what happens in a snow emergency, but if we want to be more specific on, this is, this is regular operation from October through June, having 513B be its own section about snow removal or something specific to that, puts more emphasis on, this isn't relevant, this is relevant all the time, even when we have an inch and a half and you're just plowing out your driveway, that you still can't plow it over the road. And then, I suppose, you know, being specific, there's, there's got to be another way to say, either from private property onto or across public streets? And then if we want to even be more specific about, this means don't push it over the road, this means don't push it across the road?
Right. No, I understand, you know, I think part of it is, I've been looking at these things for 30 years.
Oh, sure.
To me, it's like, I know it like the back of my hand, but you're right, I mean, it can be clarified, yes.
Yeah, I think to a lot of people that have been doing it for 30 years, it's Greek. And if they've been doing it for X number of years, and nobody's said anything, it's like, if this has been a problem all this time, why hasn't anybody said anything?
Well, that part there is very common. Even if we get a complaint about outdoor storage, or, you know, a car sitting on the grass, or whatever it might need, you know, well, it's been that way for, you know, that's always the, kind of the backup, but.
It'll be interesting, because if the law media is, is in effect, like they say, we could have a lot of snow, and we could have a lot of opportunity to educate this year.
And right, I mean, especially this first year, you may want to just agree that we are not going to cite anybody this year, you know?
I wouldn't say until we get them all educated, I would, I would recommend not citing them this year. Unless, unless you've got somebody who's so flagrant about it, that says, I really don't care, and, and it does impact our snowplow drivers, I would say we take them at a case-by-case pace.
Okay.
But I would recommend this be an educational year, but we need to educate. We need to get the right document out there with the image, and this, this is a state statute that we are bound to enforce, and you may have been doing this for a long time, but it's come to our attention, it's dangerous.
Do you want to say?
Nobody, nobody knows what it's like at 3:00 in the morning, to be flying along with a snowplow and hitting icebergs.
Right, exactly. Is your intent to send a citywide letter, then, or still just have the public works crew let the city staff know?
I would, I would like to see a citywide letter. You know, we still haven't done our fall newsletter yet, maybe it's there, but I think a citywide letter, that's specific to this, because you could still look at it in the newsletter and miss it, because some people look at it, some people don't. But you get a letter and say, snow plowing regulations, and it's, it's clear what it is, it's allowable, and what isn't allowable. That certainly is the best education to begin with. And then if you see violations, then we have the follow-up saying, maybe you missed that big old letter that we sent out. And most people say, see, if something comes with, see, if not, they tell us they look at it.
Okay.
Importance, snowplow information, snowplowing information, snow removal information.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think that's a great idea, to send out a letter with diagram. The other part would be in the educational process, is to let them know about how it impacts the plow, which would be why it was implemented in the first place. But if they're, if they're just told, don't do this, that's one thing, but if they're told, don't do this because this is what it does to our plows, and it wrecks them, and then it comes out a year tax to fix the plow, people are more apt to go, oh, okay, well, now I understand.
That's good.
I think that's going to cure 90% of the issues. And this year, I agree with you, being in an educational year, I think that's a great idea, getting people up to speed, getting them to understand, getting them to change their ways. And through the diagram, hopefully, they'll be like, oh, there is a new way of doing this without plowing it into the road. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that the toughest part's going to be plowing across the road if they think they've pushed it back far. I think it's going to be new for a lot of people to know they just can't push it across the road at all. Because you've got a big farm field across the road, just push it back into the wetlands, that's a good place for it. And that's, for variety reasons, not a good idea, but it's also state statute, so. So, one of the things that, that I realize, and as I've been looking back at our past notes, I want to make sure that it's understood, what do we believe the action item is out of this, then? Liz is going to take it? Do you, what's your, what are you hearing, Lori?
I'm hearing, Mary Council, I'm hearing that Liz is going to fine-tune it and make it more of a educational with diagram. I can certainly take it on, if you'd rather, or we can have Liz continue on with what she currently has.
I, I think, so, so again, then if we also talked generally about a letter going out, I would assume you're going to be responsible for the letter going out.
Correct.
So, would it, would it make sense, then, for you to take the information Liz has, and you put, put it together for the, the information for the residents, and then send that out?
Mm-hmm.
And, and we're into the snow season, if we get seven inches of snow tonight, we'll probably see some of this already. With, with what's going on in the office, where, when do you believe that could be done, between the two of you? I'm hearing 40s next week, and I'm praying for them.
Yeah, I guess I could probably do this tomorrow. I'm off Thursday, Friday.
Oh, aren't you, are you working tomorrow, that's Wednesday?
Yes.
We're closed tomorrow.
Oh, you're closed tomorrow. Well, if I amend the ordinance, then you can base your letter on that, or.
So, we believe this could be done by next week?
Potentially, yes. So, are you going to review it by email, then, and then just get it out?
I would suggest by email, and save a lot of, a lot of bad reporting.
Well, the problem, part of the problem is, though, is that you're going to have to approve this ordinance before you make, you know, to make it official, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Question for Lander Stockman, how is, if the, if the information's already there in state statute, and that you can't already do that, we're not really changing, we're clarifying the ordinance more than anything, right?
Right.
So, if we're.
If we say the same thing in a different way, but we.
So, so what do we, what if we do this? Let's approve the ordinance, and if we need to, if we think that the illustration and the clarification is helpful to the ordinance, we amend the ordinance again? Doesn't require a public hearing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, really, the ordinance is fine, it's, if, if we can clarify it in the letter that goes to the residents, that's really what we need.
Yeah. But I, I think going forward, if somebody is looking on, on our website, or the ordinances, I think it would be appropriate to put the clarification in there, but it won't hold this up. If we approve as is, and then when there's a clarification, we work the bugs out of it, we can approve it again.
Approve it again. All right, that works for me.
That, that doesn't require a public hearing. And that way, the letter can go out, based on this ordinance with clarification, and we can then add the clarification to the ordinance next month.
Okay.
And that way, we've got the ordinance in place tonight. So, back to the motion, it was to approve the ordinance, not the letter at this point. Is that my understanding of the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Well, I guess my question, if we're approving the ordinance as drafted, do we want to still split off 513B into its own section?
Yes.
Which would be titled, Snow Removal, which, so, I'm not saying, oh, snow emergencies, I don't care, and I skip over it? If you're just kind of glancing at it.
Why don't you just re, pardon me, Mr. Mayor?
Or however, just to signify that 513A is for snow emergencies, but 513B is for all the time.
Would, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
Would we do the 513A, 514 would be B, but would be A, and violation is now 515?
That's at least kind of how I was thinking about it, but Liz was kind of, seemed to be coming up with something else.
I think you should call 51, wow, what did I do? 513A, snow emergency, 513B, snow removal.
Yeah. I'd probably reverse them, because I'm looking at that, snow removal is all the time, and snow emergency is occasionally, so I would put the most important first.
Put 513B, turn 513B into 513.
A.
A, and call it snow removal, and then make what is 513A, 514A, and call it snow emergency. So, you're just putting the snow removal line item before the snow emergency line item, is I believe what the mayor is trying to say.
Correct.
Snow removal, okay. We're adding numbers, because we drop a dock.
Right, yep. Makes sense.
All right, I think so.
I think so.
All right, so we have a motion with that clarification, and Dan, you want to state it one more time for the record?
There's a motion to approve ordinance 2020-04 as amended, where 513B becomes 513 snow removal, and 513A. and 513A becomes 514-snow emergency, and the rest of the ordinance, 51, the existing 514 becomes 515.
And, Councilmember Rayburn, you seconded that, so you agree to that amended motion?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second as amended, any other discussion?
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
And so this is just within ordinance, the letter enforcement is still being worked out, but we at least have the ordinance in place this way.
And then is your understanding also, Councilmember Rayburn?
Yes.
All right, so the letter, we will see an email version for comments before it goes out. Any other comments on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, the motion as amended.
Hi.
Aye. Close, motion carries. All right, ordinance 2020-05, plumbing plan review by Municipal Tower.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Making motion to approve ordinance number 2020-05, amending chapter nine of the Nelland City Code relating to the adoption of the plumbing code to allow the city to enter into a plumbing plan review agreement.
I second it.
Second, and the motion is second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
As I understand it, basically, this is bringing some of the inspections on plumbing, instead of having to be at the state level, they can be done locally by our city staff, and currently done by our contractor, Minspec, so that we're not delaying any projects that, by having to wait for the state inspection, plus a more thorough inspection can be done as needed.
Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries. Finally, the website.
Wake up, Natalie. Not that you were, I know you are not sleeping.
No, not yet. It's a little early for my bed.
She was dating.
I don't want to blind you, Councilmember Rayburn. I'm just giving you a little update on the new website. This is so far, the website is completed, but I'm looking for suggestions for change. I'm planning on sending you guys a link once it is posted without the premium currently, so you can take the time to look through it as well. This is just a little five-minute spiel of what I have done. I did pre-record my voice, just because with COVID, you never know exactly what's going to happen, so.
So this isn't it, is it?
I'm sorry?
Looks great.
No, no. Yeah, it's actually blank right now.
I don't know where it went, I'm very sorry.
No, it's okay.
We appreciate your work.
Oh, no problem. I love doing it, so it's been very fun. And it's nice to stand.
Is the power button on, Natalie?
Here.
Because it's playing on my...
There's any light coming out of there.
Right. You might have to send it over again.
Is there a, something over the lens?
Looks like it.
Yeah.
There. There you go.
As we scroll down, we can see the website has a lot of information on the homepage, and it's also pretty outdated.
Front down a little bit? You drop the front down a little?
This is currently the city website for the City of Nelland. As we scroll down, we can see the website has a lot of information on the homepage, also pretty outdated. This is currently the city website for the City of Nelland. As we scroll down, we can see the website has a lot of information on the homepage, and it's also pretty outdated. Going over to the top, we have multiple dropdown menus, which will sometimes make it hard for residents to find exactly what they're looking for. We also have these dropdown tabs on the side of the page. With all of the information that is on the homepage, it makes it hard to look at, and also to read. This is currently the city website on a mobile device. As you can see, it is not cohesive with the desktop version. With social media, that is something we always strive for. When it is cohesive, it is easier to locate things on desktop and mobile version. With the current website, office workers are unable to update the desktop version or the mobile version unless they are in the office. With the new city website, it was not able to make sure that office workers would work on a comp home, so we could update residents in real time. With all of that being said, this is the website that I created for the City of Nelland on wix.com. As you can see, we only have one menu on top that drops down into subcategories. This is currently the homepage, and anything that you see on here can be updated very easily. All you have to do is double-click when you're in the login. The pictures that you see can also be updated to pictures that are actually a president or events that have taken place in Nelland. Right here, we have a calendar that can be updated with real-time information. Right now, I'm going to click on one random subcategory, so you can see what it looks like if residents were to click on it. So right now, we're in city information. If anyone wanted to find out more of examples of comprehensive planning, they can click on it, and there are downloadable files that they can read. This is what most of the pages look like on this website. With one site, it takes you to fill-in. If we click on contact, we can see that residents can find not only the city office address, but also the city email and phone number very easily. Here's another example of what one of the pages may look like. Right now, I'm going to show you how easy it is to update the city website. I'm going to randomly double-click on anything, so right now, I'm doing the title, and I'm just going to type "hello." If I were to hit Enter, then the website would automatically save and update with the new title of "hello." Currently, the office workers are taking some coding, which sometimes can take up to 15 minutes just to change one title. This is what the city website in the new version would look like on a mobile device. So since the website is currently published, since we are waiting for approval, this is just a preview of what it could look like. This is not an accurate size of an iPhone, as you can tell. But, as we noticed, it is very cohesive with what the desktop version looks like. So right here is our one menu, and any resident who clicks on forms, if they were to click on any of those links, it would automatically download to their phone, which they could find, for example, if they had an iPhone, in their pages setting. Here's another example of what one of the pages looks like. And that is it for the new city website. If you have any questions, please let me know, or any suggestions for change.
And that was the video. So that's what I have done so far, but I am going to be sending you a link, so you can preview the whole website, and then I would love to get emails or suggestions for change from there.
And then obviously, the only people authorized to make those changes are in the office.
Yep.
Very nicely done, as far as making it so much easier.
Well, thank you. Yeah, the website is awesome, it is very compatible with everything that I believe you guys were looking for. I talked with Councilmember Bryan, and he brought up his concerns, and I tried my best to, with your last meeting and the document that my mom had presented, to answer all those questions, so. Yeah, now it's just design time.
So how, you know, if we, we decide we've discussed a city Facebook, how would these link?
Yeah, so actually, through Wix, you can connect them through, Wix is compatible with Facebook, so it just adds a little icon to the bottom of the website, and residents can click right on that, and it would bring you to the city Facebook page.
And so, so we talked about Facebook being an opportunity to get information proactively out to residents, but not having to republish everything, so.
Yeah.
We really want to say, here's a topic on Facebook, and you want more information, you click here to go to our website?
Mm-hmm, yep, and we can do that with your guys' YouTube as well. So whenever you guys post a council meeting onto there, it will go straight to, and you can even preview it on the website. Because it comes up more as like a blog post, and so it gives a little description and a little snippet of the video, and it will send right over there.
I have a question, like, so on forms, so the fillable forms, let's say I have a complaint, let me start again. What if I have a complaint on my roll? Can I make that complaint on the website?
Yes, that is what our goal has been with Wix, is so people can download it. I showed you a little snippet of how to download, but you can do it through either desktop, iPad, mobile device, and you can either fill it in on the app that you're using, or download it to fill it in, and then print it out and return it.
So I can send it, I can type into it and send it to the office?
Yes.
All digital?
All digital.
So you have the option to download?
Yep, you can download it, print it.
And mail it, or you can fill out the form online, and Lori's going to get it digital, they don't have to mail nothing.
Yep.
So with the burning permits? We can do that, but do they still have to come in and have something signed?
No, we're having them currently, we're doing burn permits online. They do have to fill it out, they have to put their signature on it, so they have to print it, sign it, and scan it back to us, because we need their original signature. I don't know if that's something we could change, where they could do any electronic signature?
We could add that to the website as well.
That's one of the biggest issues, is we do it online, but we still have to make a trip into the office.
Not currently, they do have to print it and scan it to us with their signature, right now.
So how many people are scanning?
Quite a few, yeah, we do have quite a few, but we do have quite a few still stopping in for permits. But if they're able to do it, do an electronic signature, and just send it over.
And then how do they, do they receive an acceptance then, so that they know they're free to burn?
We sign it and return it back to them.
That would be huge, especially as lockdowns continue.
It's not approved until their signature and staff's signature is on it.
With lockdowns continuing now.
So my question then is, do you, can, are you able to do your signature electronically? Okay, so we don't have any paperwork, I just, so then, when it's...
Well, are you attaching a file? You're not attaching a digital signature, put a five-digit number down or something.
And, no, a five-digit number, what do you mean?
Well, there's electronic signatures, and then there's scanned images of your signature. Yeah, they're not the same thing.
No, so. But I think with the new program, it has the ability to do, not a scanned signature, but the other, the electronic signature.
I would just make sure, I don't know if the DNR accepts that, and they would have to be, that'd have to work for them, but, yeah.
And then we just...
Receive our burn permits.
Okay, I don't know, okay, let me say my statement a different way. Is it still legal to attach an electronic signature that is not a scanned image of your actual signature, and make that burning permit legal?
That I don't know.
That's, yeah.
Okay, I'll find that out.
And then, okay, so then, and then you just would let, can you then just send that to Ramsey? Or, well, until we're no longer with Ramsey? You know, we used to have to call every night and say, "These are the burning permits that were issued."
What we currently do is we send an email with all of the...
Your email, yeah.
So that'd be something we'd have to work out with them, and see if we could do it differently, but we'd probably continue that process for the small remainder of time, rather than changing it up.
Okay, and on burning permits, so when did we go to 30-day burning permit?
Just recently.
Thirty day?
We now have, that would have been something nice to know.
Yeah.
That we're now doing that.
You know, and it's interesting that in a city like ours, probably one of the biggest topics is burning permits.
Yeah.
It still does. And I think there's still, obviously, it's been so windy and dry lately, burning wasn't a good idea, but I don't know that, I think people are applying for permits when they really just have a rec fire. And I don't know how often you're seeing them, but I've talked to a few neighbors, and I said, the rec fires, the hours for rec fires, that's three by three in a row, can be burned any time of day? And we're always the assumption, no fires can be before six o'clock, right? It's just a permit request.
The larger fires, so.
As long as people are responsible with the rec fires, they can burn any time of day. Well, I mean, that, if, that information, again, with the website, I think that can, those are the types of things you'd want to be able to accentuate. You know, information, everybody could benefit from, how quickly can we get that stuff?
I also wanted to mention that if Liz, Lori, if you guys need help with the diagram, I can help.
Oh, for the snow thing?
Yeah, for the snow.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We'll use some of the previous offenders as examples. Just because this is your address, don't take it for a...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Can I ask Lori a question about the burning permit?
Yes.
So can you explain the details on the 30 days? So I can get a burning permit now for 30 days instead of three? And so during that time, as long as I burn between the hours of whatever and whatever, and my size is whatever, I can burn multiple piles?
Correct.
Or one pile for 30 days?
So Mayor and Council, we've had an issue with, not really an issue, but a concern about burn permits for a long time, a couple of years now. We've had residents come in every three days to pick up a new burn permit, creating a lot of extra time for them, time for staff. So I spoke with the DNR, I've been talking with them for a while on how we can change that, and they said, "That's really up to you, the city, you guys can decide how long you want to issue the permit out for. You just make sure that when you issue the permit, you tell them, 'These are the rules,' so we have a copy of the rules, and they can burn only during the times of a regular burn permit. If it's larger than three by three, then they have to wait till 6:00 PM till 8:00 AM. If it's a regular camp fire, they don't even need a burn permit." So we educate the residents with that, we tell them that they can burn, they have a burn permit for one month. If the DNR contacts us and lets us know that there's restrictions or a burning ban, we contact everyone who has a current running burn permit, and let them know that they're not allowed to burn until we, the restrictions are lifted. So as long as they're following, there are some cities that just say, "We're not issuing burn permits, you need to follow the DNR rules. If you break the rules, you're going to get fined for it." So, I mean, it could, any, the city can decide if they want to go that route too. But in order to alleviate some of the extra activity coming in the office every three days, and a lot of residents were coming in, and they didn't even burn. They just came in every three days to get a burn permit, and they said, "One of these days, I'm going to use this burn permit," but they didn't get a chance to, or...
Conditions aren't right, or they didn't have the time.
Yep, so now they have the opportunity that they can burn during that one-month time, as long as they follow the guidelines of the DNR, and our guidelines, that these are the hours and these are the rules, and if we call you and say, "There's been a burning ban or a burning restriction," then they're not allowed to burn.
Do you call, or do you email?
We call, to make sure they got the message.
And so, I'm assuming Ramsey still has the three-day?
Ramsey, they go out and inspect every burn. I don't know if they have a three-day burn permit, or what their timeline is.
Our permit originally was based on what Ramsey was doing.
They have a lot of differences.
They're aware, obviously, that we're issuing 30-day permits.
Yeah, they don't, they don't mind how we do it, we let them know how long the burn permit's... Yeah, they don't, they don't mind how we do it, we let them know how long the burn permits are for. So when we tell them who's burning and the address, we tell them what their burn permit length is. So they're aware of it, yes.
So Mr. Mayor, is it something the council wants to think about if the DNR doesn't care if we issue a permit or not? I mean, basically, it's just, it's an educational piece to residents to say, you no longer have to do a burning permit. But you are responsible for following DNR rules and will be, um, responsible if you, if you violate or, or whatever. Um, but the city has now stepped back from it?
I, I think with the thirty-day, it's, it's reasonable to keep doing it.
But it's something maybe to think about.
Because it does, but it does notify the fire department.
Yeah.
That, you know, they, they have on their computer, there is a permit for that area.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because otherwise, if people are burning willy-nilly, they may be responsible, but we may do more calls just because nobody was notified that they were doing it, so.
And just to clarify, I don't, I don't mean to come across that the DNR doesn't care.
Right, yeah.
They, they just let the city determine how they want to do it because we don't go through them for our burn permits. So they've stated, your city can decide how you want to handle your own burn permits, whether it be a six-month permit, a one-month permit. But three days is just, that's just such a tiny window for people.
It's unrealistic.
And with, with the snow on the ground, when there's X number of inches of snow on the ground, it was anytime anyway?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So we're still following all the same rules.
Do you still have to be fire wardens?
Pardon me?
Do you still have to be fire wardens?
No. Oh, yes, you have to have, you have to be a fire warden to issue a burn permit, yes.
So that would be something that the new fire department could have conversations to decide what they, how they want to handle it going forward.
It might be taken completely out of the office at that time.
Office, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I think I like the thirty-day idea, but I also like handling it through the city. Because when the restriction comes on, I mean, people don't check that, you know? So how are they going to know it's restricted? They, they just think they can burn any old time, but.
And it's less time for the city to make those phone calls on the rare occasion that there is a burning restriction?
Yes.
Because it's very rare that they put a burning restriction on.
It's monitored so much better than it would be, uh, hoping it up for people to just burn whenever they want to.
Natalie, we want to thank you for your excellent work on the website.
Yes, yes.
But it's not as, not as important as us as burning permits.
Oh, well, thank you.
No, we're very, it's really nice.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that, as you, as it continue to tweak it, that we make as much, um. We make it as easy as we can for the residents to be able to do whatever they can online. Um, you know, the governor came down with some new mandates again today, and it's not going to get better till spring. And so anything that they can do, because I, I can see, and I sent Lori an email, um, I, I can see us closing the office again. Um, there are other cities that are doing it, there are businesses that are doing it. Um, and so I think we need to make our services as accessible to the residents as we possibly can. And here's a good opportunity, if we're redoing the website, however, we can do that and make it easier for the residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian. With that in mind, and I, I talked briefly about this with Lori, you've talked in the past about taking online payments?
Yes.
And do we want that enabled, do you have any objections if that gets enabled now? And we, and or we work with our current, um, credit card company to merge those together? So it's just one, one service that can do in-the-office payments or online payments? And then we can, we put that into the website now?
Yes.
Does the council have any problem with that?
No.
Oh, because it's secure.
Yep. You know, I, to, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
To Councilmember Brian's comment about the online, so, um, I was at the recycle center today, happy to see a lot of paid stickers. I, I'm wondering, is, is there a way to be able to say, I'm bringing in five refrigerators. I'm going to owe you a hundred dollars. And once I put that hundred dollars in on my Visa card, I am able to then somehow go in and print five paid sheets of paper? And I have to tape that to it? I, I'm just thinking.
You're, you're saying that the resident himself can do that, he can go online, print it out himself?
But that's what I'm wondering, is that something, wouldn't that be cool?
I, I don't know, I like the idea of them getting the stickers from Lori.
But if we have to close our office for.
Any other discussion in it?
The Councilmember Raino, the challenge with that is we have to figure out a way that it's a, you paid for one item and that is valid for only one item. If you have a printable thing, in theory, that could be reused over and over again.
That's so you could cut, print it at home again, yeah, okay.
I, I like the idea.
Yeah.
But, but if there's, there's no real way to electronically keep it.
PayPal was spent, was a ticket dispenser.
Yeah, that's. Well, you work on that, Natalie, that would.
Yeah.
That'd pay some of your college tuition.
It is, it is, and you can't keep loading there, unloading things that you've paid for, you say, I don't see a paycheck, oh, how do I do that? If it's not during the office hours, it's a challenge, Saturdays are a challenge that way. And if we, if we expand our, our hours again, we have to figure that out.
So yeah, it'd be nice to be able to, even if the, there's a terminal or from your phone, you can swipe a card, however that works. But it's, or you do it with, you could theoretically do it with a mobile device one time right there and you don't even get a sticker. But that's definitely doable, it's just a matter of working out the logistics.
Okay.
Again, thank you very much, good job.
Yeah.
Thank you, look forward to it. They're working through it. Anything else? Website. Appreciate your patience tonight too.
Oh, no problem.
All right, here's that fun thing, you have a spreadsheet in front of you, I mean, this is current as of this afternoon, Lori? We have till Friday to utilize the rest of our six thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and eighteen cents. I'm going to make a motion here that the council authorize, Councilmember Brian and myself, to continue working with Lori and Jerry to utilize the rest of that as regards our fire station addition most likely. But we have to have something in by Thursday afternoon, so we can have a purchase ordering by Friday. And we're closed on Friday and we're closed tomorrow's. We have Thursday, we've got three meetings on Thursdays.
Friday, Sunday.
Friday, Sunday? Because I've got morning, noon, and late afternoon meetings on Friday. So I make a motion to authorize Councilmember Brian and I to wrap up that money with the clerk and the consultant as we meet. Second it. Motion second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brian.
Just to clarify, there, the, the, the idea is that we're going to, um, purchase some additional equipment items for storage at the fire station. And so that, um, right now, we're looking at lockers or carts or something to, that all the firefighters can put their stuff in. Where it, where it can be spread out more, so I don't, I was looking, so several, I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me, but I know that's where most of that six thousand is.
Yeah, we were, we were looking at lockers for the turnout gear to go in the new slightly enlarged locker room. Have you been by there, you see the foundations in place, it's not a real big addition. We, uh, we were able to just get in with the addition we planned, just got us under the sprinkled building system. It's a commercial building, if it had gone slightly larger, a hundred square feet larger, we would have been having to sprinkle the whole thing in it. Would have been cost prohibitive, so not a huge area, uh, but the locker rooms, uh, the locker room with the new lockers for the turnout gear. We priced out fifteen of them at forty-two hundred dollars, and we need at least twenty. So we'll be using most of the sixty-six hundred dollar lockers. And then there will be some internal storage for the chairs and tables, that'll take the rest of that, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I, I do have a question on this because I, in, in looking at, um, uh, the, the billing. There was a, a reimbursement to Miss Strike for, um, pipe and drape.
Yes.
That I don't see reflected on here. There is the primary one, which is the one I went up and picked up.
There's the general rental center.
Pol and drapes, primary election.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so you went to a different place, so, but that's, okay, and that's different than what's there, okay. Or is that a, that's like a hundred dollars more?
There is a down payment put down and then the balance needed to be paid.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, fine, perfect, I just didn't want to not go over a hundred and eighteen dollars.
And if you, you know, you'll notice in the fact that I put in a invoice from Aspen Mills or a quote.
Mm-hmm.
Those came in considerably higher than we planned. And I was going to ask if you wanted me to go ahead and purchase the twenty-five or reduce it down to twenty or twenty-two? To get that price down to where we, I think we had accrued six thousand, three hundred and fifty. So those have not been purchased yet, they're in limbo until I know if we want the full twenty-five at that price or if we want to lower that cost down and reduce the number.
It's going to be interesting because we don't know the sizes.
So here's how Aspen Mills is working this, we're paying for them upfront. And we will send in the recruiter, the fire department recruits as we have them, and they will size them there and put them in the proper size.
That's nice.
And put the names in the, um, they will have names on them embroidered on and, uh, the fire department logo. Once we know it.
We have anticipating twenty members. That's three hundred and thirty-four fifty an outfit. So if we reduce that by five, that's fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars. I say we reduce it. My recommendation to council would be to reduce it, put the rest of the money into, um.
What?
Emergency operations, send it over to the fire station. All right, that's okay with council, that works for me?
Yes.
All right, so we, uh, we will take care of that by Friday. And my understanding is, the, our big will have a home, at least one hooked up by Friday. And what the weather does to them here, they plan on having a, a half a dozen. But the, according to the attorney, that will meet our, our contracted agreement. They will continue to hook up until the weather makes it impossible and they'll finish up in the spring. So the COVID portion of our big will be addressed properly. Um, my understanding, again, weather related here, I don't know what's going to happen, the, uh, fire station framing would have been done by Friday. Um, I didn't get up there today to see if anything got done, if the material was there on site or not, but.
The, uh.
Trusses are there.
Trusses.
Saw the trusses, I didn't see the wall framing.
I didn't look for that.
They're supposed to be there today, and they're supposed to have it framed by Friday, so. So again, according to the attorney, that, uh, they will have substantial work done, and we will have an obligation through contract. He says that is a qualifying expenditure. For those that, that know small businesses in town, we got a notice this week that the county is running a third small business nonprofit grant program. So anybody who didn't make it in on the first two, and we, we had really good response on the second one. We happened to be in the middle of a, uh, internet call, and Jackie mentioned that nobody now that had applied, so. She contacted, and I personally went to most of the businesses in town and said, here's money from the county if you can qualify. The local churches took advantage of it and the local businesses took advantage. But if anybody knows somebody in town that didn't, until the money runs out, there's still the ability to, to apply online for small business grants.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
The governor today also, um, announced ten mil, ten million dollars. I, if I remember correctly, it was, it was, uh, focused to those that are going to be affected by his current rulings, uh, the new executive order.
Yep, and he says this is, this is above and beyond the PPP from the federal government.
So our bars, restaurants. Yep.
So, again, if you know people in business, Lori, if you want to, you know, give anybody that this is a, an opportunity for people to get reimbursed for pandemic-related expenses or losses. Any other questions on the COVID expenses? Lori, do you, do you know what you need to do to make sure you authorize these all in time?
Yes.
Do you have time?
The report went in today and there's another one due on Friday, it's, it's due on the fifteenth, but I'll be sending it in on Friday.
Any other questions on this? All right, thank you Lori, for keeping on track of that with everything else that's been going on.
Did we vote on this? Didn't we, uh?
Uh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, we had a motion second. Any other discussion? So you can hear, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now the balance extended by Friday. All right, so I had, I wanted to bring up the city sign. You know, I got to thinking when we redid the, the big plow over there, it looks so much nicer. And this big black eye we've got out front, and it's, it's not repairable. So I'm going to make a motion that we, as soon as possible, remove that sign at this point. We can discuss a future of it some, some other time, but it's just an eyesore and it needs to come down. We, we got used to looking at it and I think we need to get rid of it at this point, it can't be repaired. So I moved that we remove the sign in front of the building here at our earliest convenience.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that for discussion.
All right.
So are you, you're talking the whole, the complete structure, not just the bad part that's all blacked out?
I'll take the whole down.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Just wondering at our earliest convenience, if we're running into winter issues?
Should, you know, if, if, other than plowing, it's, it's, it's not the, I don't see it as a technical challenge.
Okay.
I mean, I, I.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you considered, are you thinking that staff will take that down?
That's what I want to confirm.
I don't know that we have the equipment to take that down. I'm asking.
Okay, so let's, if, if, if you would check with Joe and see if he's qualified to do that, if not, then, then let's get a, a price to get it removed.
I just don't think we have the equipment to pull that out of the ground, but I will check with him.
I haven't been sure if it's in the ground or bolted on, but check with Joe.
Yeah.
And if not, um, let us know what it would take.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Raino.
We would also have, I'm assuming there's electrical going to it, so you're going to have to have an electrician, um, hold, hold that power out of there. So let's, before we do that, let's get some costs, um, associated with it, find out one of staff can do it, if we have the equipment. I mean, I, yeah, I don't know how it's connected, how you're going to move that, it's, you know, um.
Let's, okay, let's find out what it would take, electrical and physical removal, I think it's time to get it down.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think that we need to make sure that we know what we're doing. Last thing we need is to have it go down, let me think about taking trees down.
Kind of open the window and.
Open? Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
What I was, what I was just kind of pondering is if this might take a little while, is there a, I'm wondering if Lori knows of a relatively inexpensive, easy way just to take the plastic out and put a clear or a solid white or just something in there so it doesn't have the burned-out part on it?
That certainly would be until we get it done, if we could put a plate glass up there. That staff could do it.
I'm just, you know, if it might take, take a while to get it out there, at least the burned, the burned section is out of there and replaced with the. replaced with the, some white piece, even if it's
Something.
Plexiglass or not cardboard or say that.
Well, Mayor and Council, what do you think is a reasonable amount of time? If it's three months, do you want it to just be as is until it's removed? Or are you thinking if it's gonna be there for another six months, then replace it with a piece of plexiglass so it looks?
I would replace with a piece of plexiglass as soon as possible. Then let's find out what it would take length of time to get it down. I think as soon as that blackened thing is, is covered up in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think if we put up a piece of plastic and then we knock the sign down, that's gonna be kind of funny. I think we just leave it the way it is, take it down as soon as possible. As soon as you replace that plastic, people will notice and they'll be like, ooh, what's coming? And then we tear it down and they'll be like, why'd they do that?
Good point.
So just take it down.
Why did you repair the roof before you took the building? No.
Yeah, so.
All right, so we will leave it as is until we get numbers. The intention is to get that eyesore out of here sooner rather than later.
I just, I remem-, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rayna.
I just remember back in a conversation with Andy Schrader and the storage unit and the big sign that went up there. I questioned why the building official was part of that. And he talked about the, the, the construction behind and the wooden shear and all that kind of stuff. So it makes me think it's much more difficult to take that down. We don't know if it's one piece, two piece. I don't know if by any chance there'd be any record of anything as far as when it went up and we have the brochure or anything like that, that could help us know that. I mean, I, I.
We haven't come across anything yet.
Yet.
To try and get it repaired, we were looking and we couldn't.
Right, okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Does electricity still reach the top just fine?
I don't think so. I don't, I'm not sure on that. I think we couldn't get it to work at all. We couldn't get the signal to go to it or.
So quite possibly if a new sign came in the future, instead of trying to reclaim this one, a best method would be to run a brand-new line so that a new sign would be, it would make more sense to redo everything if we did a new sign versus trying to use the pole and the electricity of the old one.
Possibly. I don't know that answer. It wouldn't be a sign company that would be able to give us.
Tell you that, yeah.
Is it salvageable or not?
Yeah, the electrical, the one thing, the computer signal would be another thing.
And I don't know if it was the computer signal or the electrical that wasn't working together anymore.
We don't, we don't know what caused it to burn out. All right, so we will get prices and get it back to the council. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
On that though, so, so if we find that Joe, if we know right away that Joe can't take it down, then I, I would say part of that getting pricing is from a sign company to come in and what do they take, charge to take it down? And then the electrical, please do it. Thank you. My, I had asked for the resolution accepting the donation from the Elk River Youth Hockey. The, the resolution doesn't stipulate what we want to do with this money. Where do we want to place it? In the past, we've kind of designated it to a specific location rather than it just go into the general fund and get mixed in with everything else. So I would like to see it go to the, the, this structure here. That it be dedicated to the building improvement fund and be dedicated to this building.
Good idea.
Okay, so that's the motion?
Yes, that's my motion. I second it.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayna.
Question for Councilmember Rayna, is that going just into the, the building improvement fund in general? Or into the building improvement fund and then specifically earmarked for the remodeling that was, some of the remodeling that was planned for here for next year?
Correct, Councilmember Rayna. That, that it goes into the building improvement fund designated for City Hall. And, and I would like to know if, I, I know that we've done some in the past. I had a spreadsheet a while back as to where we were designating funds to. I don't know if that's, I don't remember if I ever gave that to you or not, Lori. Because I know we've, we've designated other funds to come to this building too. So I will find that spreadsheet and send it to you.
Yeah, and quite often in the past, we did it to public safety. Someone want to, as we get this building finally fixed up, I want to be cognizant of when the charitable gambling funds come in that we will have additional power sources coming up here soon. All right, so we had a motion second. Any other discussion on this? Mary, it's her decision.
Oh, okay.
All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of designating the funds to the building funds, specifically to the City Hall update? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lori, did you get the email on this from the state?
What is that? I don't know.
Is this the hockey on, the odd people? That's Joe?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the group?
I have something, Mr. Mayor, and I want to express my appreciation especially for the extra work that Lori and Alan put in for the early voting. My husband and I were out there and we voted early and it was just, I mean, there were so many people. They were waiting outside a few and the girls stayed pleasant and helpful. And it was just, and everybody in there was just visiting a little bit and I got to know some neighbors that I hadn't really ever met before. And I just think they did a great job and Lori should be really proud of them.
Here, here.
Want to make sure that's on the record that, that's where it's well appreciated, all you did.
I will make sure to pass that along. Thank you.
That'd be exhausting. I, I don't know when they put in the extended balloting that they thought of small towns and what it was gonna do to staffing. I, I think it was certainly a learning opportunity to how we want to handle things in the future with staffing.
Way on our way home, my husband said. I hope those girls are getting extra pay for all that. That is unbelievable. And it was really something, oh, that had to be done there.
Well, we did get some treats.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
On that topic, in the past, I, I believe we've sent thank yous out to our election judges. So can we make sure to do that?
There you go.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you. And then I had two items under the, for the, well, actually I had a third. I meant, emailed a third to Lori. But I had two under the, for the greater good and Lori got the, the answers to us later today. I, I believe we need to give approval for hiring, whether they've been with us before or not. That we need to give approval for hiring of snowplow drivers. And I would make a motion that we hire Dave Han, if that's the correct.
Alan.
Alan and Dana Henjum. And that would supplement Eric and Joe.
So how many are we voting for?
I'm moving Dave and Dana.
Why?
Why not Matt?
Yeah, why not Matt? I don't get it. Why aren't we doing three? We can't afford three?
Well, we typically have, they're on call. They're not, they come in when they're needed. And if they're not, if they're busy doing things, they're not planning this. This isn't a part-time job. It's not a full-time job. So they get the call and they come if they're needed. I think that the reason why there's three here is that if Dave's busy and they have to go down the list, they have options.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I was curious why we had to inquire of this, of Lori in the first place. Is this something Lori could have handled without our input and could have just said, these are the people I'd like to hire? Can I get your approval, approval to do that?
Normally that is done in September, early October. It, it kind of came up because we had an October snowpack. We've been buried in the office with early voting, so I think this one just slipped in the cracks. But normally seasonal workers, whether it's winter or spring and summer, do come up. As here's my recommended staffing for council approval.
My confusion on that, Mayor and Council, I just assumed they've been working with us throughout the year and through snowplowing last year. I just, they're on our list. I just assumed they would continue. So that's my misunderstanding.
So what about, to, to Mayor, what about the temporary employees? Did you just want to address first the snow removal drivers and then go on to the temporary employee?
Yes, please.
In response to your wanting to hire two of them, I say if Lori wants to hire all three, I'm fine with all three.
Well, if I don't get a second, then somebody can make a motion to hire all three then?
I make a motion for Lori to have the authority to hire.
We have a motion on the floor already.
We gotta wait and see if anybody seconds.
I'll, I'll second it just so we continue our discussion. We should have done that before discussing, so. We have motion and a second. Now we can discuss.
If I just, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
We went back to what our conversation was at the, at the October meeting. And at that point, we had not heard at all what the plans were for snowplowing. I know we have in the past asked for seasonal positions to be discussed and a plan for them much earlier than the season hits so that we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball. As of the October meeting, we had not heard anything as far as what our plans were going forward. And so I asked and at that time we were told that the thought was that we would ask Dana to come back to do the plowing. We thought he would be, that was the assumption that he would come back. He normally does. I had asked if in, by chance Dana wasn't coming back, that we would give permission for Lori to post for the positions if, if we needed to post. And Lori's comment was that basically if, if he doesn't come back, then yeah, we'll have to post. But all we're doing is bringing Dana back. So that was, and we never heard back whether or not Dana had been contacted and had said yes or no. And we're now in November and to my knowledge, we still didn't have any supplemental plow drivers. And so that was my question. Where are we with this?
And Mayor and Council, if I can respond to that, at the time when we had that discussion, Dana has always been one of our plow drivers, so we have always offered that back to him. We have Dave Han working in the, with us now spreading gravel, who has shown interest that he could be a backup on the snowplowing as well. And then Matt Lent has always helped us as well with the snowplowing. So we had, in the office, the staff and I had decided that we were, had it covered for snowplowing by having the three and didn't need to go out for, to hire more. So again, my misunderstanding on that, that I thought we were covered and had it taken care of.
And Mr. Mayor, that makes sense because she's working with these people and they've been working for us all along. So it would seem like we would just keep them on. Being this, I, if I understand correctly, this is it Dave that we have back, or Dana, that we have back every year?
Dana, Dana comes back every year.
Yeah, and he doesn't want, he isn't gonna do, he wants some backup because he doesn't want to do the whole job. So that would make sense then.
I think Dana does a regular route.
Yeah.
Matt, Matt was the fill-in and Dave Holland was saying, I can, Dave drives the big trucks. And I think that's one of Joe's concerns. He doesn't have anybody driving big trucks. If Eric's not available.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
That comes from a Greenberg.
Can I make a recommendation to adjust the motion on the table?
You can address the person making the motion.
Okay, well, I make a recommendation that we allow all three members to be considered for employment to the motion on the table.
Yeah, and I would not accept that change to my motion. I, I'm going back to what our conversation was in October. And it's basically if Dana comes back, we don't need anybody additional at this point. I'm willing to have council agree to Dana and Dave. If that doesn't prevail, then somebody else can make a motion to hire all three.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
I'm just trying to think if, if Dave and Dana aren't available, it would be good to have a backup in place.
Lori, do we know what vehicles they all drive? Are they interchangeable?
They're interchangeable. I'm, they don't have a specific truck they drive.
I don't know that, I don't know they all can drive the big trucks.
If Eric and Joe aren't available or Joe.
Well, yeah.
Dave can drive this.
They can drive the big truck. So then we have the two, the pickup trucks that would be available too.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's part of it is they, they don't all drive the same vehicles. It's the pickup trucks, the cul-de-sacs in the parking lots and things like that that are the pickup trucks they're used for. Other discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
Make a motion to hire, to have Dave Haug and Dana Henjum be our primary back, primary snow, snow removal drivers to help out Eric and Joe and Matt Lent could, can, is available to serve as a backup if, if needed, especially if Eric or Joe are down and, and Dave has to drive one of the big rigs.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
Just want to make sure that we, we have that extra coverage just in case because we only have, we can take advantage of Dave who can drive both the big trucks and the little trucks. Yeah, usually when Eric and Joe are out, there's the, the smaller pickups that are also being out to, to clean up, clean up and, and with them. So this way we have a little extra coverage just in case.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Second item.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayna.
I asked also about this because I have no idea where we are with staffing within our office. So I was just looking to see who is still working with us. What are they doing? What are their thoughts as far as going forward? Ms. Strike did present this to us. One is the, Natalie is the first one and she's still working on the website and I appreciate that. And once we are complete with that, then unless there's some other reason that Lori would have for her to come back to the office, that she would get, bring that to us, I'm fine with that. The second one, when we originally approved the employment for Jeremiah, it was for, Lori's email said it was for two, I think it was two weeks, she could come in and work on some specific things and that was after our building tour. And then there was some discussion later that the parks, the other part, part-time, part-person had to go back to college and Jeremiah continued to work at that, work in the parks. It's never been brought back to the council that we would continue to. There's never been brought back to the Council that we would continue to keep the employee on. I believe that we need to look at what do we want as recycling, what kind of staffing we want in there, and post for that position.
What have they been doing? I mean, obviously, we haven't been doing a lot of park stuff.
Yeah, maybe the recycling center cleaning up the cardboard and on the days that it's not open, he's in there cleaning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I like the idea of Jeremiah being moved to the recycling center as now I'm employed and no longer can volunteer there. I was spending plenty of time there with Dan, making sure that it was open for the mayor, for the city, for the residents available to come in, which I greatly appreciated the availability of still going to the recycling center, even with limited hours. I think by moving Jeremiah into that position, it would allow us to continue to keep it open, especially if there's a new lockdown coming. And if this weren't enough hours, or if this is too many hours for Jeremiah, we could look into opening more days, which people have, we've certainly got that sort of feedback from people being slightly disappointed that it was only open as much as it was. But we could look into opening up a little bit more if he was the one taking the brunt of that work, or we stay where we're at. Regardless of it, my bottom line is if Lori determines that these are the people that she needs to do these certain things inside of, you know, the scope of the office and her staff, I support Lori in those decisions.
Well, Mayor and Council, just now when Jeremiah was hired, he was hired for the parks, but at that time, we had no plans on a shutdown with the recycling center and not getting any help. So we moved him around where we needed him at the time. When the parks were done, we pushed him over to recycle center to help out.
A good worker.
A very hard worker.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Having been in the recycling center on Saturdays, if we're going to keep it, continue to keep it open, it would be to our, the city's advantage to have someone there on Tuesday and Thursday when it is open, not necessarily for taking money, but to just monitor what's going on and managing what is or isn't being taken. I'm putting quite a bit in the garbage can because, from the plastic, because we don't take it. It's styrofoam, et cetera. So I would agree with Councilmember Rainville that we need to come up with a longer-term solution for the recycling center. But in the meantime, this might give us somebody, some resources that are available to be there for Tuesdays and Thursdays. And Saturdays are, you know, the days that were open and not open, but if, when the doors are working so that they're, the recycling is only open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I really think having somebody in there during those times will help us, help to keep the garbage, not put in the recycling bin.
I want to say that, you know, I appreciate the volunteer, you know, Joel, Councilmember Greenberg, when you were doing it, and certainly Councilmember Brian, I've been out there with you on Saturdays occasionally, and the amount of things that are turned away. Lori, you mentioned this the other day, when we didn't have the volunteers during the week, we're seeing a lot of junk show up, and it's getting more expensive. As a council, we need to decide if we want to keep that open, and if we do, how we're going to manage it. We kicked this one down the road. But I will say, when people are in there, they have no idea these are council members volunteering for this. You know, they just assume somebody's getting paid, getting paid nicely to do this, and most of the time, they didn't realize they're council members. And on Saturdays, you know, when I've been there with Dan, and he's very politely said, "We don't take that", and people have learned that yes, no, and they take it back with them. And Dan has never gotten any recognition for doing that. It's a lot of work, and when he leaves there, cardboard's all available, the place is swept, and usually the plastic's done. And if that means he stays past 12 o'clock, and he still helps people out that come late, I think it's commendable that he's done that. And I will say, I think it's commendable that the council cleans up this room when we're done. And we sat here at P&amp;Z the other night, and everybody was gone. And here's Dan putting away tables and chairs. He's not even on the P&amp;Z. Not a person on P&amp;Z helps, and nobody locks up, it's just. In fact, we asked for help this time, and they actually refused. So I think that what's been done has been commendable. And with the recycling center in particular, we need to decide what we want to do with it. And if we're spending time in there that Dan's cleaning up on Saturdays, and then I'm assuming that what Jeremiah's been doing is on Wednesdays and Fridays going in from Tuesdays and Thursdays. If we were going to do this, it would make sense to me to assign the hours when the building's open, so somebody's always there when the building's open. Because otherwise, when it's not open, they know it, and they come and dump stuff. So if we're going to be open from, what is it, 10 to 7 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that would be the hours on Saturdays. But I think it needs to be staffed, and it's appropriate to be staffed by somebody who's getting paid for it, because I think the volunteers, they're a yeoman's job, but they've been doing it for months. And if we're going to do that, then let's do it. And I would think if they're there when it's, when it's open, then there won't be piles there when it's not open. Because right now, they're just sitting, you know, Jeremiah's dealing with stuff that people dumped on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If he's there keeping up with it and educating people on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I don't think we have the Wednesday, Friday issues. Would you agree, having done it yourself?
Yeah, I mean, and even if it's not, it's trying to cover as many of those hours that were open, it has the benefits to getting there. I don't know how busy it is on Tuesday and Thursday during the day, but if it's a matter of, you know, staggering them out, or I know Joel, you were kind of calculating when you thought stuff was being dropped off.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I personally felt that people had sniffed out that the earlier hours, I was not there, Dan was not there, the 10 a.m. to 12, because that's, I would show up later, 3:00, and there would already be dumped, dumped stuff. So they had figured out, when it's open, get there early, dump it before those guys show up. And when we showed up, then there wouldn't be as much of that. There was still our share of stuff that we turned away, our share of stuff that we made to get paid, get paid. We did a lot of educating. There's a ton of value with what you just said. If Jeremiah or whoever is there from the time that it opens till it closes, it's going to, it's going to take care of a lot of garbage, it's going to educate a lot of people, and it's going to get a lot of people to the office to pay for the electronics. And then when it's slow in between, he crushes boxes, he shovels cans, and you just kind of do all those tasks at once.
You know, it would be nice if that was managed that way, because like Saturday, when I went in there, it backed to looking like a dump. And when Dan was done, at least that side was spotless. But the stuff that didn't get into the scrap dumpster, the tires, those types of things. So I think if it's going to be open, somebody needs to be there. And that way, it's done pretty much when, if you keep up with it, it goes along. Like I say, if it's slow, you sort cans, you shovel things out, you put things in the dumpster. I think it's appropriate, but if we're going to be open, somebody should be there. Because otherwise, we are, you're right, they see their way around. We could see it on Saturday. You know, we'd open the door, and it's like, oh, you're still here. It's like, what were you going to be, you know? And so I think it's appropriate if we're going to do it to have any hours that we're open.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
One of the things that we had found out by being there over time is that cardboard was coming from other places, because other places had started to charge for it. So people from other vicinities had learned we're a great place to get rid of free cardboard. So we were seeing, in my opinion, I was seeing gargantuan amounts of cardboard that just seemed out of proportion compared to cans, glass, plastic. Cardboard just comes pouring in. So some of the feedback we got from the community was, it's coming from other places. Or businesses have found a great place, you know, and they have the right to bring their stuff. It's just this particular part of the recycling center, that cardboard, is a fast-flowing aspect.
And as a council, we need to understand, are we subsidizing that? You know, there was a time when paper and cardboard, we had paid. And it might be something where we're subsidizing. And I know, I've talked to the St. Francis Hardware Store, they bring theirs down here, because they get a lot of cardboard. Zimmerman was, but they found out Lake State's would take it, so they'd rather come all the way over here. When we were shut down, they started taking Lake State's. But if other people were taking it, yeah, where's the? I would ask people when I was in there on Saturday, where are they from? Are they now living residents? And many of them aren't. And if we're subsidizing it, we should know that and decide if we want to keep doing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Are you getting, are you saying you don't get any money for turning in this cardboard?
I'm saying that at one point, it paid pretty well. I don't know what we're getting currently. I think the prices have dropped significantly.
Was it possible to maybe charge a little for the cardboard?
Probably not.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Brian.
The question, the question, Councilmember Blake, is how are you going to charge for it? Are you going to buy the pound? Is it just a flat fee to drop it off? How are you going to manage what that charge, if you're going to charge for that, what would it be? That is, Joel and I have thought about that too. You know, it's how do you?
Per size, per pound, per load, and then someone has to be there. You have to pay for that, you have to pay for that.
Yeah, it just, we need to know for. And so one of the things we do is what's it costing us to run the recycling? Electricity, porta-potty rental, hauling, salaries, the benefits, those types of things. What's it costing, and are we subsidizing it? I know, Mayor, you had a meeting over there today. But that's something we have to decide. And I was standing out a couple of months ago, and realizing that some of the stuff isn't actually getting recycled, it's, are we going through the motions and paying people to bring stuff to us? And if we're paying out for the convenience of a business to get rid of their cardboard, that's not appropriate either.
No. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a question on this strike, is, so we put that security system in. Are we, is, have we gotten any culprits on it? I mean, we've never heard anything other than we approved it to go in, so what's?
We've gotten a couple, but there hasn't been many drop-offs recently. There was one last week that we haven't checked the cameras on just because of the business in the office, but we know what date they were dropped off. So we can go back at any time and look at it, and then send the information to the sheriff's office.
So how many culprits have we caught with that?
Three.
And have we been successful in contacting them and getting payment for them?
We've had them come in and pay for it.
Oh, yeah, and on the days you were saying that when it wasn't being staffed by volunteer council members anymore, people were tending to dump. Were the cameras picking that up? I know there was a lot of children's toys, it looks like somebody cleaned out a daycare center.
That's the day we need to go back and check on. That's one of the days.
And they're still dumping on the north, on the west end.
So we have to either install more cameras, or, and then there's some people that know how to park their vehicle, so you can't see their license plate. We found that too.
Oh, my goodness, for a $10 appliance? You said they're dumping on the fireside, the fire station side? They did sign an air conditioner there the other day.
Air conditioners, cars, parts, engines.
So, so, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So when they, when we, when we realized that was happening, Council had directed to get costs of cameras on that, and have we?
We have not gotten costs. We have a list a mile long that I've put aside for elections, just preparing it.
All right, so at this point, we're going to do the recycling.
Well, my question was, I just wanted information. I have no idea what's happening, people, residents ask.
Let me ask, because you had the second one here, Dave Holland, 32 hours a week hauling gravel. Will he not be hauling now that we're wintering, and he'll just be?
It'll just be on standby if we decide that he can come back and plow. He's not hauling anymore.
Okay, so we're pretty much done. I appreciate Joe got out with the roads with airport, so he can put the gifts back on, and did a nice job knocking down the washboards on the one that I drove on. I'm assuming that the, today, the blades went back and be prepared to go out tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
Do we want to do something about this? God bless it. Do we want to say that this, the recycling is going to be open, it's going to be staffed?
Yeah, we had a motion, didn't we? So there was no motion on that, that was just informational.
Mayor was asking, who's working these?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I guess I'm just, would make a suggestion to Lori that if somebody is in the recycling, to potentially have them there on Tuesday and Thursday when we are open, that might help, well, it should help cut down on.
I think Saturday too, because I was asked for Saturday.
Right.
We're counting on you, you say.
Currently, Jeremiah is working at the recycling center on his hours that he currently has with the city, which is 7:00 to 10:00, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then he's here all day on Wednesdays. Those are his hours, so those are the times he's currently working over there.
Are those the times he's available?
Yes.
And he's not available other times?
He's not, he has a second job.
Can we adjust our hours to, at the recycling center, to reflect at least that full day Wednesday?
You could, you've got a lot of people who know that it's Tuesday, Thursday, not?
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday is pretty much a main. And it's still 7:00 at night, so.
Well, that brings us back to kicking the can down the road. Maybe it is time we hire someone to get in there specifically?
Those hours.
And if they are, then Jeremiah's working at the recycling center, that would, I don't think we need both. If somebody is doing that with what you're doing on Saturdays and what you were doing on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's pretty much done by the time you're done.
If somebody was in there, I would think we would be keeping up with everything. You're not necessarily doing everything every day, but with the combination of we doing it.
What you're avoiding coming in, and what you're able to do in between times, you can pretty much keep up with it.
Right now, with what's being, with the work that's being done during the week and Saturday, I would say definitely we're keeping up with the two, two and a half days we are open.
If we're going to keep open, we need to, I believe we need to staff it then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Lori, do you think there's any way to get Jeremiah to adjust?
I can ask him. I also think it's going to be a tough position to fill.
Yeah, those are bad hours.
To find somebody that wants to, will be ours and the duties.
Yeah, we got a couple of guys that know it.
Right, so the other thing I would add, we're anticipating with Walz making some adjustments to how we do things with the COVID. And we could, as a response from the city, say, in response to the governor's mandate, we've adjusted the hours of the recycling center too, to make it wrap around Jeremiah's schedule. It's an idea.
I don't know how well that works with residents now.
Yeah. I think the hit and miss hours are more difficult for residents than solid, two solid, two and a half solid blocks of hours. I think that's easier for residents to remember.
The other thing is with the economy the way it is, there might be people that are willing to do it. We've had some seniors that have talked about it. I don't know what the economy's doing, what it's going to do under the new restrictions, but there could be people looking for cash.
Mr. Mayor. I suggest then we immediately post for a job for those two days and Saturday, and Jeremiah fill in the gaps.
Till we post, till we find a position, find somebody to fill that?
Yeah.
Because like I say, I don't know that we'll need both if we fill in the position, I think we keep up.
So if we just limp along? So if we just limp along with Jeremiah, we're just going to have to face the fact that we're going to be pitching a lot of stuff in the garbage and we're going to have a lot of items that'll be dumped.
It goes back to the, what's it costing us? Because the garbage is going to... When I get much for recycled goods, then the garbage is costing more because people find it's a good place to dump it. And they do. Man, the stuff that comes in, it's amazing. So... All right. So your, your motion is to post for the Tuesday, Thursday, 10 to 7, and Saturday noon, 9 to noon?
I, I don't know if I made a motion. I just said, "I think that's what should be done." What do you, what does, what does the rest of the council think? Do you think we should put a write-down or should we ask Lori for input, like if we, in regards to money, if we got a employee or we hired someone to do this, do we scale back Jeremiah's hours?
Mr. Mayor, has there ever been a consideration to close it down?
That was our discussion when we went on our building tour last summer. We're going to discuss what, what it's costing us, you know, what our expenses are, what our revenues are, and are there better ways of doing it? We're going to, we had to have that decision so we could know if we're going to go tour other facilities on how they're doing it differently and or better. So we had a general discussion. We just haven't followed up on it. I, I will tell you that for, for what it's worth, between COVID and elections, I think we have great intentions. It's just been tough to handle.
I agree 100%.
I will say that I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to do much of anything with all the election stuff going on this fall. So things we initiated, we just, we haven't been able to follow through on yet. Apparently, there, there needs to be a discussion. Are we losing money on it? And if so, do we want to subsidize the residents that way? And the non-residents, I guess, is the big part of that. For some reason, two things that really hit home with people out here are burning permits in recycle.
It's the two drugs.
How many people have recycling in their weekly or i-weekly pickup?
Cardboard doesn't go there.
Cardboard doesn't and the big things we have don't.
What?
Big cardboard. The stuff that comes in here is, is packing boxes and it's...
So then probably it's not residents. Because I get all my cardboard in my recycling every, and I get a lot of packages.
But you have, you know, if somebody put in new windows and they all come packaged, or somebody gets an appliance and all...
Still get them in there.
Yeah, you just have to break them.
I have to just break it up. I mean, I don't think it's residents that have to have the big cardboard.
Well, and that might be the other thing we have to do is, well, license, I don't know.
Mayor, Council, can I make a recommendation that we had, that we discussed having a workshop in early December? We have a number of things to discuss and maybe the recycle center could be one of those topics as well. I can have the time then to go through and get the numbers together for you and show you what we're spending versus what we're taking in. And we can make a better decision at that time.
That's excellent. Perfect. Okay.
Right.
So the other question I had under the greater, for Lori, was based on the governor's plan, new executive orders today, I just want Lori to be thinking about how this is going to affect the city. I mean, there are other cities that are closed down. Basically, they're, either their staff has been exposed or is positive, or they just have closed to the public based on the possibility. So just figure out what we think we may do going forward.
Ramsey, Ramsey did put out a note today that...
Ramsey did, yeah.
They're going back to mostly online meetings. Yeah, it's something we have to be paying attention to because we are, Noka County put out, or the, Jim Malcolm put out, that Noka County's up to 5% rate. Other parts of the state are up to 10% rate. And so transmission is increasing. Don't know what that means as far as illnesses and hospitalizations, but positive cases increase.
Anoka County since Saturday, Sunday, Monday, went up, I think it was like 1,300 cases. Now then went up 20 cases.
20 or an additional?
Up, and then additional, we're at like 66 now. And I don't believe that's a correct number. And an example is my husband and I were tested, not because we were exposed, but just testing. I filled out the application. So when they said city, I put Now then, because that's where I live. Had my husband filled out that application, he would have put Anoka.
Yeah, I put Old River because it's the mailing address.
See, and that doesn't, so, so I'm saying that 66, that's the very bad number that we would have in this city. I believe it's much higher than that. When you look at Oak Grove's numbers, you look at St. Francis's numbers and you look at population-wise, I, I don't believe that's an accurate number. So I just think we need to be prepared. I, I think truly as a city, we need to take it serious. And I, I expressed a couple of things to Lori in my email about that, so.
All right, anything else for the good of the...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Is it in Lori's authority to shut down that, to shut down the city's offices, or is that our authority?
I think that Lori would make a recommendation. The council certainly want to know what the plan is.
Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think the council should make the decision. Lori's got to have that input. But I believe that Lori, if one of them ta, let's say somebody tests positive, she's got to close it then and then let us know. I mean, we can't wait and have a conversation after.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, let me clarify.
An emergency situation.
If there's an intention to do this as a plan, the council should approve that. If we have to respond to somebody came sick or tested positive and quarantined and we can't manage the office otherwise, she has to be able to just notify us, "We have to shut down." Sign up. It'd be similar to if, if one of them is off sick or on vacation and they need to leave the office, they have to close it down for that period of time, so.
Mr. Mayor, I...
That COVID would be over by now, but...
Propose a motion that we adjourn. Second?
We are adjourned.